Question to order, roll call please.
Commissioner Decker.
Here.
Densberger.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
Call.
Here.
Mayor Mingus.
Here.
While present, your honor.
Thank you very much, of course, this is to look at the 2019-2020 city budget planning. The discussion will be ensued and no formal action will be taken, I'll turn over to Commissioner Densberger.
As you said, we're, you know, we've gone through the operational budget for the most part, still a few things to be decided on it, but for the most part, it's, I think, in pretty good shape. The remainder is for us to consider various capital requests from all departments. Talking with Mr. Becker, we're at a million, one point one available, that neighborhood?
Yeah, all depending on, I know Chief Project just those.
Depending on a few things still in the operational budget.
Correct.
As I look at the capital request sheet, I see three point four, three eight million dollars in requests for that one million this year. So obviously, we have some paring down to do. I was just speaking with Commissioner Decker about a couple of the larger considerations, which are regional street projects, and I think we'll need some guidance from Commissioner Decker and the Streets Department as to how to deal with those. I know that they're, they're working on an alternative, so. But, you know, streets are obviously a priority, I think, for everyone up here, so Commissioner, if you don't mind, we'll.
Sure.
We'll start with you on that.
I'll be honest, the, I've learned some information just in the last ten minutes that caused me to want to investigate a bit further, but the opportunity, first of all, a little bit of history, we, a few years back, agreed to do the roundabout, which is out in front of the Embassy Suites. Many reasons for that, but one, a traffic concern. The Illinois Department of Transportation has always seen that area as a problem. They've not allowed us to put in a turn signal in front of Embassy because it causes vehicles to back up, causing traffic concerns on Bob Michael Bridge. This opportunity came for a roundabout, and PUEAT, that's the, the group that we're in with each year, and it's, it's provided us a lot of very good regional type of road projects at essentially a third of what it would cost the city to do by ourselves. Summit Drive is an example of that. Summit Drive was very successful, it costs the city very little as compared to the entire amount. And then Centennial, and we've, we've been very fortunate with many of the projects that we've had. Couple of years ago, when we talked about doing it, however, it was a statement made by me, and I believe made by others, that we didn't want to do it if it would take away from the city's street maintenance dollars. At the time, our city administrator spoke about how it would be paid for, can't remember exactly, but I know that something, he was looking at TIF funds, hotel motel funds, but funds that would not normally be set aside for our normal street maintenance, just finding dollars that, that we couldn't normally put into our street maintenance budget. Here we are, a couple of years later, and speaking with Jeff Becker, that, that's not an option. So now, in order to do it, we would essentially have to take away from city street maintenance projects in order to do that project. So that's caused us some concern. PUEAT has been a very good partner for the city of East Peoria, so we don't want to do anything that would cause us to be, have any problems with the organization. We want to make sure that other projects in East Peoria, for instance, Grange Road, Grange Road is a perfect opportunity that we would like for PUEAT to look at in the future for funding. It does benefit some, some of the residents in East Peoria, but benefits the regional residents quite a bit more. So, the projects like that, we want to make sure that we save as, as potential future projects for the city. But I was speaking with Dennis a few minutes ago, I'll let Dennis talk about this since he had the conversation with Pat Meyer, because we don't want to do anything that's going to hurt us in the long run, however, we, none of us want to start a project that's going to take money away from where we should be putting it, and that's our normal, our street maintenance dollars, so Dennis?
So quickly, just to kind of give you a quick lowdown on what we were discussing, was, was there any other possibility rather than just killing this entire project? It was brought, brought to me that in past, PUEAT's group has approved, basically postponing the project, and postponing it back to the end of the current fiscal, or end of the budgets that they have already approved. So in other words, it doesn't have to recompete for funding, it still stays in the status that it was funded before, we're not giving funds back to the group, we just say, hey, we want to take our place out of line, and we want to get back at the end of the line and maintain that funding for the next available time period. Current funding at this point is in the twenty-two, twenty-three timeframe, the next projects, I believe, that will be coming forth as new projects will be in the twenty-three, twenty-four year. So with that being said, it has been done in the past, it would literally be us asking, is there a possibility for us to step out of line and, and file back at the end of the funded projects list? In essence, kicking this can a couple of years down the road, to have to be able to figure out how to fund it at that point in time, rather than losing the investment, and the time investment that we've put forth in engineering to get us to the point where we're at. It, it's an opportunity, we did it ourselves with the Summit Drive, it was supposed to have gone a year earlier, we met with them, they allowed us to postpone it a year to do it. Peoria has actually done something similar, where they pulled one of their projects and substituted in a project in a different order, and then kind of put it back in line, the, the original project. There's no guarantee that it will or won't be done, but rather than discussing it as a, we have to know tonight, yes or no, we're going to move ahead, this might be an opportunity not to have lost the investment, the funding, and the, and the continuous advancements of being able to put a roundabout in that area, this just might allow us to postpone the actual construction piece of it.
It's something that, there's, there's the obvious statement that could follow that right after, and that is, yes, but we look two, three years down the road, and there's still the issue with money, and that is true. However, this just coming up right now, I think it's at least something worth considering. I was hoping Dennis Triggs may be here tonight as well, and I would like to speak with him, I'd like to speak with Rick, who's in the audience, to talk about, they have a lot of history with this. Patrick Meyer was the one that Dennis Barron spoke with, and Patrick is the engineer, he has been for a long time in this area, so I'd like to ask him some pretty direct questions about what that could mean for, for the effects on the city of East Peoria and the projects that we may look at in the future, so.
One more quick comment, too, just so that we're clear, Pat Meyer is not the engineer for this project, so he doesn't have anything to gain by saying that we need to secure this to keep going on. We've used Midwest engineering for this particular project, so he has no financial incentive in trying to make sure that we don't lose this project. His goal is, because he's one of those that helps fight for the projects for East Peoria, that he's concerned of what this may do to our status when we go back and ask for the next funding of a project. While everybody seems to say it's not going to be held against us, you have to understand that the potential is there. When we go to ask back the next one, the first, anybody who's voting may have the decision that says, well, you couldn't fund the last project, what makes you think you're going to be able to fund this one? And are you wasting our time? So we don't want to end up with that black eye in this process, if, if we can keep from it, because we are wanting to come back to the table and ask for future project funding.
So Commissioner, would you relocate these funds in a different direction then for this year?
Well, I'll be honest, to say that right now, I've known about that option for about fifteen, twenty minutes now, so I'd at least like to think about it a bit. As I go back to what I said earlier, I don't think anybody's intention, when we talked about the roundabout, was to build that in lieu of taking care of city streets. So, that's disheartening to think that, and, and I don't know what happened, I don't know how we got there, but now we find out that it's not, those monies aren't there from other sources. So, our city streets are certainly, I think, what we have to make a priority, and, but I want to make sure that we have a long-term look at it. So I think, all, what I'm asking for is a little bit of time to try to figure out all the facts that I can.
Just to illustrate the ramification of this, on your, your fiscal year twenty capital request sheet that you gentlemen have in front of you, it shows a hundred and forty-seven thousand, I'm sorry, eighty-six thousand this year, and next year, one point one, three five million. The proposal of what we would actually do with that roundabout is to reserve about three hundred thousand this year, three hundred thousand the following year, and three hundred thousand the year after that, to level this out, and reserve some money this year for payment out over, over the next two, so you'd have basically level payments on that of three hundred thousand each year, and then last year, then perhaps using, utilizing H-Tax to help fund it, since it, it does funnel several restaurants and hotels as well, so.
Commissioner Jeffers, any comment?
Comment, the question I have, we talk about letting it postpone doing the, the job for next till a year, two years away. My understanding, I know with Summit, we discussed that back in two thousand eight, when we were making the decision, it had been in the books for many years, and we made the decision to do it, and we did. Does, is the state, right now, it's about a one-third, two-thirds match, approximately, we put up a third, they put up two-thirds. Does the state portion of the match stay static, and any price increase come out of the city's pocket? Because I know with Summit, their amount stayed firm at that two to one, whatever the amount was, eighty, twenty at that time, and while they stayed at the original eighty percent, the city ended up paying thirty, forty percent of the overall job, so there was a cost to wait all those years to do the job. So just, that's my question, does the price escalate? I would say probably yes it will, and several counts us because of the construction season and bids and all that.
And the answer to that is, is yeah, the, the, the guestimate that's put out there by PUEAT, that kind of secures their piece of the funding, and as well as our funding. If we go out and we get all the way to construction in two years from now, and those bids come in at four million instead of the three point four million, yes, you are exactly right, we will be on the hook for the overage piece of it, because their funding of that seventy percent doesn't change, it's seventy percent of the original project as it was presented. So if we kick this down the road two years, there, there could potentially be an additional impact.
So we could pay, I'll just make a guess, instead of paying a million dollars for it, we'd be paying one point two, one point three, just a guess.
Realistically, yes.
Because we're paying the increase of the whole. Also, I guess I have a question, why, and this is not to be combative here, but why do we say that it's an either/or situation here with street maintenance and/or the roundabout? We have a whole slew of requests here on capital, and we can make best judgment out of best use our money. Now, some of these things that are requested can be financed and shoved out a year, two, three, and that would free up cash, and Commissioner Densberger, you mentioned we pay a level payment on this roundabout. We did this with Centennial, where we.
Well.
Pay for it in installments over a period of time, and it was, it worked out well.
Commissioner, it's not, it's, I'm not saying it's an either/or, what I'm saying is that if we're out of one point one million dollars, if we're, if we're saying this year that we're going to proceed with the roundabout, and we need to reserve three hundred thousand of it, that's roughly thirty percent.
I get that.
Of our capital budget, so I think you need to make the big decision upfront before you start parsing out for smaller things. You know, we, we heard an appeal just last week for two plow trucks, I agree, we need them. We had a discussion about the need to revamp our fueling station, that's at seventy thousand dollars, the plow trucks are about, would be at about three sixty, at one eighty per. It, that decision in and of itself impacts everything else on the list.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent, Commissioner, and the one thing those other items don't have, they don't have a seventy percent match. I mean, that's, that, as far as math goes, and, and you're.
I agree, a seventy percent match is hard to turn your back on.
You know, and so, we'd be better off, I'm not suggesting we do this, but we'd be better off to find a way to, with, with the escalated costs associated with waiting, we'd be better off to borrow the money and do it, and save that two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars in escalated costs that we know we're going to face. I mean, that's just a suggestion, look at the dollars, if, if we are committed to do the job, then do it the most cost-effective way we can do it. We allocated three hundred thousand, I believe, in engineering costs for this just a few months ago in September. The roundabout was part of the two thousand seventeen strategic plan, so this has been out in front of us for years, and here we are, and I understand it, we have some issues here, now, and we're just leading off here, so it's, the other areas will have to be discussed and so forth, but this is the only one that I know of on this list that has a seventy percent match to cover the costs, and the costs are fixed, we know what they are. If we wait and put it off, gentlemen, we were actually killing it because.
One question, and, and it was something you said that made me think about this, with Summit, Rick being here might remember this the best, we agreed to start the project, therefore begin payment for it, and I know that we had agreed to pay for it in a certain year, but if I remember correctly, the bills ultimately came to us much later than that, am I right? Like, not in the year, they, they came off a while.
That's, that's correct, Commissioner, that, that really all depends on IDOT's workload, and at that time, IDOT is pretty busy, so that all the projects kind of need stair stepping back, so that's certainly a possibility, we may not have that huge payout coming in that twenty budget, maybe in the closer to the twenty-one budget, but that's all dependent on IDOT's workload, and how fast they can do all the paperwork.
Okay, so it's, it's, what you're saying is we couldn't count on it, but historically, would, would your guess be that it probably would, or would come in as stated?
I, I would plan on coming in and stating.
Okay.
Another question I have is that, Dennis, and maybe between you and Rick, what are, what are some of the additional PUEAT's projects we have in our list? Isn't Centennial one of them, and some other big projects we have that are in the signline that we would like to champion or be an advocate for?
We do actually, Centennial has already competed once, correct, and did not get enough votes in the regional impact piece of the puzzle, to actually be funded project, so we've already presented it once. I put forth, I think, four of them in this particular plan that we believe are, would be PUEAT's eligible, the first one being, of course, Centennial, the hillside of it, Grange Road, or Grange, Grange Road was the other one, the Bass Pro extension, which kind of comes by Federal Warehouse, that falls a little different, because it's not necessarily a reconstruction project as opposed to a new project. So that one doesn't necessarily compete against the other ones, but it's, it's a different pot of money, if that makes sense. And I think Highview Road was the other one that was on there, I think it was estimated at a one point two million dollars. So again, a lot of these are large dollar projects that are beyond our normal funding process to be able to try to do, unless we look at something creative and say, okay, we're going to spend X amount of dollars for two or three years to pay off this one big project. We don't have the funding year after year to tackle one of these large projects, so they just kind of ride in limbo with no real direct answers how to get there.
Well, that's, that's a good point to make, because all these projects that he just mentioned, I guess Bass Pro Drive is not there, that, that extension, but Highview, Grange, Centennial Drive, whether or not we choose to do the roundabout that's proposed, those others, we will have to do. And that's, I think that's what causes me to have heartburn with this, is because I don't want to make a decision that's going to require us to pay all of each of those when potentially, we could pay one-third of each of those. I mean, we're talking millions and millions of dollars of savings.
Yes.
If, if we continue into the PUEAT's project lists, and into that, in with that organization. So, that's why I don't want to make a quick decision, and I want to, I was trying to look at all avenues.
It wouldn't be realistic for Highview, because we're probably going to have to do something before PUEAT's, whatever.
Yeah, that's a good point, Mayor, is he said that, I, I would like to do Highview this year, I'll be honest with you, I, I would like to do Highview at least from a line I to the point in which the concrete section goes away. I mean, in reality, I'd love to do it all the way to Armstrong School, why not make it safer for the people who walk through that area? I, that's not something, I think we can wait until, what, year twenty-four, twenty-five at the earliest. I'd like to do, I'd like to start on it this year. It affects a lot of people, and it is in very bad shape, if you look at the amount of traffic that drives on it, so, not to belabor that, but that's a good point, Mayor.
The, but, the Highview work, I think, was penciled in in twenty twenty-two, I believe, in our long-term plans, is, maybe, I'm not sure how that's been shifted recently, Dennis, but it's, it's not like we haven't forgotten about it, it's, it's been there in your plan as of now.
Yeah, correct, it's, it's sitting out at the twenty-one, twenty-two engineering piece, and then twenty-three, twenty-four piece to actually do it, just in the ten-year process. Of course, every project that doesn't get funded this year kicks all of that.
Right.
Potentially out another year, and it puts it all in competition, but.
And if, if, if we did go with a delay in the roundabout construction, then what that does is push the other, the chance for us to compete, for the others gets pushed out another year, so it compounds their cost as well, it will go up. We'll still have the match, but the price would still go up on our part, so, that's just all part of it.
Yeah, and since they haven't competed or, or, or been awarded either, that, that, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that price becomes a little bit fluid, because until it's actually funded, it's funded at that piece. So the next time Centennial competes, it's going to compete at a higher rate, because the costs have gone up.
Yes.
So until it's actually becomes funded, that's when it kind of locks in those dollar figures, as to, then you begin the process of working off of that dollar figure.
So Commissioner Decker has asked for more time, how much time do we have, Commissioner Densberger?
We need to pass a budget, and we have the budget hearing set for, Jeff? Second meeting in March?
Second meeting in March, be the first reading.
Is the budget due by May first, or is it due prior to that?
Well, the budget itself, by statute, I don't believe is due until July.
End of the first.
However, I don't think it's anywhere approaching prudent to kick it down, kick the can down the road. I think it's in the city's best interest to get the budget set in place as quickly as possible. Of course, how the money is spent will be up to the new council, however, I think we need to get the budget locked in and get some certainty. I guess at this point, on this particular item, I would recommend that we, for the time being here, mark three hundred thousand dollars for this project.
If you don't mind, I'd like to give my two cents, it's probably going to fall on deaf ears anyway.
Three hundred thousand purchase it.
But here we are tonight, talking about needs versus wants. Five hundred fifty thousand dollars in street maintenance, look at the streets that that touches, which is nominal. We talk about all the streets that are existing that need repaired, and we're talking about something that's in addition to what we currently have, using money we don't have. I get the one-third, two-thirds, pipe dream and all that, I got to be honest, I can't even believe we're contemplating this, to me, it's a no-brainer. I would not support whatsoever one penny going to any of this project, when we have neglected what we have now.
So then how do we correct the problem that's down there now?
That's, you know, Dan, we got problems all over this city, you can get in your vehicle and drive around and look at it. So, high traffic, you guys had to know that was coming back when all that development was made, it's no rocket science, just going to have to deal with it as is. When we sit here and we soak up property taxes, and we expect people to sit there and drive on these streets in these conditions, year after year, and we're spending five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars, when every year, we sit here and have the same discussion, man, we sure wish we had more money for streets. So it's about priorities, that's not a priority.
But every year.
What's here is a priority.
I've, I've said this for twelve years.
I get it, so now's the time when we have to just take a look at stuff and say, what's a priority? A roundabout, to me, is not a priority, when we have streets falling apart, have been for years, and we're putting five hundred thousand dollars when we should be putting three million in them.
What the.
It's just frustrating to me.
It is absolutely frustrating to me. Commissioner Decker and I have proposed street maintenance since our days here.
Yeah.
We've known this for years, there's no surprise, no surprise at all, and I, we said, where are the cuts going to be? Where are the cuts going to be? And we march on and don't address it, and so you get farther behind, you get farther behind. If we had have spent a million last year, or two years ago, yes, we wouldn't have been quite as bad today. But this council voted for engineering just a few months ago on this project, and knowing this.
Here's.
And the fault, and, and we went ahead and we've, we've, we have a plan to get out of this. To me.
To get out of what?
To me, we have underestimated by choice, and being, being conservative, our sales tax receipts for the new budget year, Commissioner Densberger said, so I like the cautious approach. However, it's very conservative, and we may have an extra two hundred thousand there without much push at all. I'm hopeful that the state, and they're talking now, and I believe they can do it, if, if they can make the changes they're proposing soon with the pension reform to spread, spread out some of those payments, we'll see probably at least a five hundred thousand dollar increase this year, or decrease in our obligations while maintaining an adequate pension plan funding based on what we've seen and what our, our, our finance director, Mr. Becker, has, has said.
Let me ask the council, would, would we entertain the thinking that we would, the appropriation we have for the roundabout, that we would designate that for streets in general if we didn't do the roundabout?
I would say yes, and looking at the capital.
Before you answer yes, I want to ask you one further question.
I said I would say yes, I'm not speaking on your behalf.
But besides the roundabout down there now, then how do we fix Grange? How do we fix Centennial? That's what I'm getting at, not just that roundabout. This decision has more to do with the future than it does with that roundabout.
We aren't sure that it would put us in a negative category.
The, the, the million dollars you would gain this year, next year, you'd be back at the motor fuel tax amount, again, next year, now what are you going to cut next year to pay for that extra five hundred thousand, a million dollars? I suppose. I suppose, I could say, well, we'll just take it, we'll just cut the squad cars down another four or five. We'll, we'll take out these fire trucks because, you know, we got mutual aid so we can, we can rely on someone else to take care of that too. So therefore, where do we start? And there's other capital things there. I, I don't have all the easy answers here for sure, but to say that it's, this is something we've ignored, as a group, we've ignored. And three of you did not vote to go with it.
John, I agree with you.
Wow. Commissioner Jeffers, I take exception to your comments. You know what? You're going to be held accountable for your record. I don't need to say anything. People can go back and look how you voted year after year. Listen to your comments, it's on, on record. So tonight, I'm basically saying, I don't see how in good faith, and I certainly won't be, supporting spending money on something above and beyond what we currently have. We're talking about a new road project when we can't even take care of what we have. To me, it is just completely assome.
It's not, it is not a new road. It's a new road update.
Okay.
It's a new road update.
Your opinion?
So we, we keep the money in there. I'm, I'm suggesting we keep the money in there because if we didn't do the roundabout, we would appropriate it for streets anyway.
Mayor, I'm just asking.
For street maintenance, yes.
I'm just asking for at least a week to, to look into all the options. The, the thing is.
That's fair.
We, we don't want to make a hasty decision that will cause us not to be able to fix Grange Road in the future. We don't want to make a hasty decision tonight that will make it so we'll have to pick up the entire cost of Centennial Drive if we can keep from it. Yeah, I, I agree with what Commissioner Call is saying. It's what I've said before. We don't want to do that in lieu of city street issues or projects. We don't want to do that instead of fixing those. But we want to make sure that we're not making a decision. When, when we originally did this, I remember our city administrator sitting there saying that, that whether it be from TIF funds and some coming from Hotel Motel, that this would be paid for, which I know the statements that I made and I believe that some of you made the same statements, that you would not support that in lieu of our city streets.
So one week, within that week, we'll research as far as what the ramifications are regarding throwing that money down.
Okay. So.
We keep it in on the budget though?
We, we will reserve, I think in all prudence, 300,000 and for that project pending a recommendation. And then this is a council decision. It's a decision to be made by everyone, but we'll reserve it for the time being pending more information. Is that fair?
Yes, that sounds like a.
So the 300,000, just so we're clear, what we're discussing here is the Camp River Road Roundabout, which currently lists 86,000.
Well, the reason being, Commissioner, it's 86,000 this year. Next year, it's 1.135 million. So the idea is to smooth that out.
Correct. But my point is that's an additional 114,000 or 214,000 dollars.
From this year.
Now that's going to come off somewhere else.
Well, it's coming out, it's, it, that's a choice to be made in lieu of other things on this capital list. And there is no street paving on this capital list currently.
No, there's not. Okay.
I just want to add one thing real quick. That 86,000 is already in there. 55,000 is engineering and the 31 is land purchase.
Correct.
That's already in Camp Street TIF.
Okay.
So the 300 would go directly towards the 1.135 from.
So the three, okay. So that's in addition to the 86.
Right. So as I said, the idea is to level that out rather than.
So the 1.1 just went down to 800,000? Okay. Just want to make sure I have it clear, understand because I won't support it, so.
Very good.
And, you know, other things on this list, I've already spoken with Mr. Livingston. I think the, given our other priorities, I think the $100,000 for bike trail is probably not in the cards for this year. I know we talked about the fueling station at some length last week. I truly believe that given its current condition, we're to the point where we either fix it or we get out of the business, remembering that if we get out of the business, we'll have to pull the tank and that's going to cost you more than $70,000. So I would advocate for that one, just in prudence. We've kicked that one. It's been on the list for at least five years. The police are asking for 14 squads on this sheet. That's pretty simple math. The fleet plan is to buy seven per year. Is that correct, Chief Rodrick? None were purchased last year, so the 14 simply represents last year and this year. Of course, if we do that, that's an expenditure of $45,000 per of $630,000. Chief Knapp, of course, has a laundry list of, of vehicles, a platform truck at 1.2 million, an engine at 600,000, a F-250 diesel pickup at 40, a generator for Station 4 at 25, keeping in mind that next year he's going to want $250,000 to replace some ambulances. We talked about plow trucks last week, the need for two, as none was purchased last year. Any purchased the year before, Dennis?
One year.
So we're well behind on that. So that is a request of 360. Light poles over Farm Creek, we haven't heard an explanation on that yet, but I'm sure it'll be forthcoming. That's at 30,000. Veterans Bridge replacement at 150, is that simply engineering for it this year, Dennis, or?
I'm sorry, I missed.
The Veterans Bridge replacement, the request is. Yes, that, that was to ask for the engineering. It's one that's been created very poor, rated very poor. So it was to kind of an ask for the engineering so that we could look at replacing the bridge next year. And that, that full request is 2.7 million dollars in fiscal year 21, 22. And all of this, as I've discussed, there still is zero by street paving. So that's where we're at, gentlemen. And as I said, given all of that, the bike trail, I think, has to go by the wayside, even though it would be TIF dollars. Like the TIF is extended at this point, is that fair?
Yeah, so there's, there's currently, the TIF is borrowing from the general fund or gaming, depending on which one. So anything you spend additional in TIF dollars is going to take away from that general fund.
Okay. So I guess that pretty much lays out the current requests for capital. And as I said, I would advocate for replacing the fueling station because I think it does ultimately save the city some money in fuel expenses, so. And it would help us with accounting and accountability.
Based on our discussion last week, I'm going to go back and revisit the proposed budgets each department had given. And I'm just curious, I know we have a revised copy here, and just briefly looking at the numbers, some of them really didn't change. Based on the salary, the wages, I know we discussed a benchmark of 1.75 and I don't see where all the departments have readjusted accordingly. But if you went 175 based on last year's numbers, and this includes overtime, there's a difference between three departments alone of over 267,000 dollars above and beyond is what they had built into it. So I guess my question is, were they revised? Is that something that is thrown into this 1.1 million dollars or?
Dennis gave me new numbers today for vehicle maintenance, streets and garbage, which are all of his general fund. I didn't, we didn't change any revised numbers on the water sewer side, which is completely separate from the capital conversation since it's a enterprise fund.
Well, here we are facing another difficult budget, so, I mean, I guess it goes back into what I said all along, what are the priorities of the city?
So I guess at this point, given the, the other things on the list, open to comments as to how to proceed and what is most important. I would say that off the top of my head, rolling stock for the police is an ongoing need. They got nothing last year. I think we certainly need to take a look at least, at looking at living up to at least one year's allocation for the amount of this year's budget. Otherwise, you're, we're going to have maintenance costs and difficulty providing service.
So you're saying the fueling station, the police, what else, Commissioner?
Beyond that, I'll, I'll, that's as far as I'm willing to go at this point. I'd love to.
Do we have a consensus on that from council?
I would say with the police, I wouldn't go any more than seven would be my top end. And honestly, it's going to come back down to what else gets cut off the list. The platform truck, as much as I love our fire chief, he pretty much knows that was going to be axed off the top.
So those two are priority.
But I go back into, you know, for, for future, what we discussed last week, I think Commissioner Jeffers brought it up, you know, going out, you know, five, seven years. I know we've got, looks like possibly a 10-year plan in front of us. You know, I think the wise thing to do moving forward, I don't see it happening this year based on that number shrinking before we start cutting through this list, but I think it would be in our best interest to set up some type of program where we're allocating a specific amount of funds towards purchases like that. I mean, hindsight's always 20/20. If we would have stuck a hundred grand aside for the last 10, 12 years, we could pay for something that expensive, but that's definitely gone off the top. The engine I spoke to chief about, I could see allocating funds over possibly a two-year period, you know, similar to what we've done with the ambulances in the past because 600,000 lump, especially now that we're down to whatever, 800,000 dollars, that's, that's not going to happen. The generator, I believe, is a must. So that has to stay on there, in my humble opinion. And that F-250, chief, is that something that could be spread over two years or where are we at with that one? We did not discuss it.
It could.
Okay.
Obviously, I'd prefer not, but based upon everything that I'm hearing, I, I understand that decision.
So that's something that I would support doing.
Are you saying, Commissioner, for the F-250, reserving 20,000 this year? From this year's budget, holding it over and purchasing it next year?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Call, then, you mentioned the, the trucks and the platform as well as the pumper. I guess it's a pumper, isn't it? I think the engine truck. I would think for like a platform truck that has probably even, it's not quite like the police car, but the, the life of it, Chief Knapp's, what, 20 years probably for this high of a quality, heavy duty?
Correct. What we have today is a 1992, which serviceable life was, obviously, we're, we're beyond that right now. The biggest concern I have is the obvious that we have the, the large situations like Cuthrung in Washington, we get into all of the hotels that we have and potentials for life loss. And I, I have some serious concerns continuing to operate with what we have in the long term. We do need a plan and that's, that's the gist of this whole thing. We need a plan to replace that truck and move forward.
It would, it would probably not be unusual for an expense like that to finance beyond a couple of years. I mean, we, we would probably could do it for five, six, whatever, pick a number for cash flow as we look ahead to manage ourselves into a situation where our capital monies go up significantly here soon, relatively soon in the life of the city. The order lead time to purchase the platform truck is, how many months is it?
To give you an example, if we were to go through the, the process of ordering a truck, I would anticipate from today, it would be 18 months before it would pull in the building.
When is the invoice hit, chief?
Sir?
When's the invoice hit? Up front or at the end?
There are, there are options now too. And again, I'm, I'm not a big advocate of financing fire trucks or a whole lot of things, but realistically, we're in a, in a tough spot. But if in the instance that we did, you can push these out as far as no payments for, for two years. So add two years to that 18 months and, and now you're looking at drawing this thing out for a pretty significant period of time.
But that's a financing option. That's not a, that's not a, we'll pay for it when you deliver it.
Correct.
So there, there may be an advantage to order it whenever we choose to get it, to order it, to lock in your price because the prices are not coming down.
Yes, sir, correct. I, and that is something that, you know, with the engine and the truck both, we may need to, to really look at hard is because it basically is a 12-month turnaround again from the time you order, you get everything put together and you actually take delivery and, and deferring payments and so forth. That is possible.
It looks like these trucks, I mean, just those two, and you have other things coming along the line and out years, but it looks like if we were, if you were to order these things in the next year, you're looking at getting them 21, 22, at least the platform truck has a longer lead time.
Yes, sir. That, that's something that Mr. Becker and I have discussed at length is just the different possibilities of when we're looking at an engine and we're looking at a truck, if we, if we timed this correctly, and again, I know we're talking big money, but if you time this correctly, you could order both of these apparatus over a span of two to three years and do a combination of financing that would lessen the burden for a pretty significant period of time. I'm happy to lay that out for you. Again, it, it gives me a bit of heartburn thinking about that type of situation, but on the other hand, you're talking about a, a truck with a life, again, of about 20 years. So you're not talking financing a Ford three-quarter ton pickup truck. It's a completely different ballgame.
That you throw away in a few years or short time.
Right.
But I, I guess for you to project your need for the truck and then we need to work, we, I mean, the commissioner, et cetera, works to set a timeframe, which, and you've done that, you've been doing that. And it looks like this, these dollars don't necessarily have to hit all at once, but they are going to cost money if replaced.
Correct. And that's, that's what, again, Mr. Becker and I have talked about at length is that we can, we can push this out a period of time to lessen that overall burden, which is what we haven't done in the past. While it makes me uncomfortable, it makes me more uncomfortable realizing that we need to replace these, these vehicles. We've put ourselves in a really bad spot.
Chief, just to jump ahead, a little peek into next year, you have ambulance at 250. Is that two? Is that one?
No, sir, that is one. As, as you're aware, what we have done is we have gone in and done refurbs to some of these trucks that, that are reasonable and that we can do that with those trucks. We've got a situation now that we actually have to go in and.
Time to do a new box.
Scrap, scrap one out and, and start with a new one. So we can't do it to all the, all the vehicles like we would prefer, but unfortunately, when we've got some of these trucks that are, are now 20 years old, we're beyond the, the serviceable replacement.
What's your lead time on an ambulance?
Conservatively, six to nine months on a good day, depending on chassis delivery and so forth.
Okay.
So last, last week, the, the idea or the, I guess the word financing was put forward. I don't think police cars are something that we should finance because these are a recurring expense. As far as the number of police cars, I think it just kind of depends on what we can afford. I, I, I already regret saying this because I think Rick might throw something at me, but the minimum I would want to put into streets would be at least a million. And I want to put in three. But we have to, we have to start making progress from where we are now. Otherwise, we'll never dig out of the hole we're in now. I would, I would say that a minimum of 1 million probably doesn't start digging out at all. Hopefully, it can at least maintain the overall numbers. If, and what I mean by numbers is every year Patrick Meyer does a rating of our streets and you can see what that rating number has done. And to be honest, they've done a very good job over the last eight, 10 years maintaining that number. Our overall street rating has not fallen like, like you would think it has. However, there are some that are traveled a lot, whether it be Springfield Road or Highview, some of the very heavily traveled streets are the ones that people notice. So that's, that's kind of what's out there right now. So I would say a minimum of a million in streets total, like to do more. But when we look at whether it be fire engine, fire truck or plow trucks, I think it's something that we have to look at financing. Not that we want to, but if you look at the life of those vehicles, our plow trucks, some of them are 15-plus years old, I mean, that we're, we're using all the time. I think our newest one is four years old. Commissioner Jeffers, I'll hand it to him. I hand it to him because, man, some of, sometimes I get these texts and emails at midnight or so. I'm pretty impressed, but he's always looking at ways to stretch that. He's talking about very low mile, couple-year-old plow trucks with stainless beds that could be options for extending our overall fleet, buying some of those to kind of, I guess, increase our overall fleet. But I think financing is something that we're going to have to look at if we're going to look at buying some of these. The reason that recently the, the state has been talking about some revamping or some changes to the pension funds. Right now, I've talked about this before, many of you know, there's a mandate that's out there that has to be fulfilled by the year 2040. They're looking at extending that to 2050 and reducing the amount for that mandate, something that I think they should have done years ago. In fact, I would, I would support being a little bit more aggressive than that with decreasing the amount. But Commissioner Jeffers alluded to it a few minutes ago, that would, that would give us quite a bit more money. Just a kind of rough guess by Jeff was somewhere around a million dollars a year that that could potentially get us back so we could use that money for our capital purchases.
All right. Are you recommending to finance the plows?
It, it is something I would consider, yes.
Consider.
I'd consider anything at this point to put us in a better position than we're at now. If, what I was talking about with what Commissioner Jeffers was mentioning, I'd even consider that if we could allow our mechanics to go there and look at them and see whether or not they would give us a, a longer overall life out of our entire fleet. So I'll look at anything there.
You know, just keeping a, a running tally here, the, if we go with 315 for squads, 70 for a fueling station, 25 for a gen set at Station 4, reserving 20 for a pickup next year, we're at about 430. If you added in two plow trucks and just purchased them, that's a 360, you're at about 790. Commissioner, I, I agree, I'd love to spend at least a million dollars on it, but even if we use a 1.1 million dollar figure for, for capital needs, we're talking about more like 850 for streets, which I, I don't think anyone up here is comfortable with.
Is, is that combining with motor fuel tax, Commissioner?
The only other thing I, I would add is that I truly do hope that the state makes some adjustments to the pensions. However, personally, I don't, you know, we can't bank on that. We can't budget for it until it's done. It's not done. And frankly, I don't think the contributions are the problem. The state needs to get real about the entire program, as I've told a couple of state officials. It, it's not the, stretching it out and kicking the can down the road doesn't answer, doesn't answer the bell, so. You know, financing plow trucks, you're, you're right, they're expensive. We could certainly look at a financing option on them, but the problem is, again, as Dennis and some others have said, we're going to finance the one we buy next year and the one the year after that. I mean, at some point, we have to just pay for what we're buying. So gentlemen, I said last week in the, our friendly neighborhood newspaper man asked me, asked me what I meant about it, but when I said that the, the fun and the, the fight would start this week, and this is exactly why. Because, you know, we, we've got a lot of things we need and and I, I guess we, we need some further recommendations as to how to fill those.
Sounds like you've, what you have there takes everything.
And rather than a million, if, if as I described it, you'd get to 770. 1.1 takes, well, it'd be 790, 1.1 takes 790 off of that. That's what would be left for streets in addition to the MFT money, so you're still under a million dollars.
So if we, just for conversation purposes, say we had one plow truck versus two. Does that balance it out where you want to be?
That would, that would pretty much get you to probably a million dollars for the MFT and capital money. That would get you to about a million dollars. However, that's not, that's not reserving 300,000 out upfront for the roundabout.
Okay, so that, that pops it back in there.
If you pop that back in there, then we're at, if you put the 300,000 in for the roundabout, we're at zero.
I think that means more.
Then, then you're back to just MFT.
Yeah.
I don't have the answers. I'm, I'm just the-
And I really do think we need to revisit the salaries, the wages, because I'm telling you, the numbers do not add up unless we're missing employees that I'm not aware of that have been added, that were not presented to this council or, or whatever. These, these do not add up. If you go back and look at-
Can you revisit those?
Police, public works, and public property, between those three, as it was presented to us, if you went in and put a 1.75 increase, just like the other departments, there's a difference of 267,000 plus dollars.
I, I do know on the police side, we budgeted for payouts. You had two sergeants retire. And as you remember, those are significant.
There's a factor that was not involved, and I appreciate what those numbers are.
I can give us-
It's not listed. Obviously, we're just, we're given the sheet just like the people out in the polka car.
Right. I can give with broader on that and get the exact numbers on that. That might help.
So it sounds like Commissioner, what you're proposing there is where the money's at, and the big factor is that 300,000 dollars.
That's where we started and that's where we sit, Your Honor.
Just a, a comment, as we look at the, and I think the department heads have come up with generally a three-to-five or five-to-seven-year capital plan because, you know, we're looking ahead. Whether it's the cost of the roundabout in this year's budget than the Riverside Camp intersection being it's another million dollars, so that's looking ahead. But I think it's in fairness, when you look, look at the whole package and fire, you've got your, you've got a big year, then you've got some lean years dollar-wise. That's why for the big-ticket items, to spread those out, spreads out the cash flow without any really true cost to drive our capital. It really lets us do, accomplish other things. That seems to be a way to make it work. I worked a lot of numbers in my old life, but that's looking at the whole, the big picture, the rolling business plan for, you know, again, not just this year, but for three, four, or five years out. And, and we, we know the picture gets a lot better and increases even, you know, much better to where future councils will have a much easier time at this, believe it or not. And it's our job to do our best with what we have now as well as look ahead, and that's the department heads to be projecting out what's, you're the messenger. You're the messenger. They're all messengers telling us what, and this is no surprise. We've had working sessions for years over this potential need of the bridges and, and our hope might be to grab a couple of these on a capital fund, capital bill from the state that may take some of these out of the picture, but we don't know that either. But we need to be looking at that.
So were we removing the light poles and the bridge replacement?
Unless I'm, unless we hear a, someone to advocate for them, there's nothing on here that isn't needed.
The, the engineering is the cost for Veterans Bridge. Is that at the 150, Dennis?
Yeah, that was just an estimate.
So we, we know, we know we're going to have to do that, but so maybe we pay for the engineering anyway and have it ready to go? Does that hurt us at all?
Exactly. And realistically, I mean, I don't know what the engineering timeframe is on that. Most of the engineering projects I've dealt with, you do the engineering directly before, and then the, the bridge figure would be immediately following. The numbers were split by a year when I inherited them.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't, I don't know what the basis was for that, if there's any particular, or whether that engineering could be pushed next year and the bridge still stay on project. I don't have that.
If the state, if the state were to come up with a capital plan in the next six months, they might. They probably have as good a chance now as they've ever had in a long time. Being shovel-ready, or if that's the term we get, gets overused sometimes, is, does having engineering drawings and design for projects like this help us when we compete for capital dollars?
I would say the more we have ready to go, correct. I know when, when I, I had a, a higher level meeting on, on a request, I put forth $63 million worth of capital requests for Public Works. A lot of these same projects that are in the 10-year plan were part of those projects. And we ranked those from starting at the top, going down the list, and the intention is if they come and handed us $10 million, I'd start at the top of the list and go down until we ran out of $10 million projects. A lot of those are stormwater projects. We don't have those in a lot of our long-term funding that we still have the needs out there, but some of those major street roadways that we talked about earlier that would be competing for POATs were some of those projects that were on that same list. So, yeah, in this instance, I'm asking for funding for projects from every direction I can find, and whoever comes up with it first is just going to be the one that helps us solve our budget woes as we go out. I, I mean, seriously, if we did have a capital bill funding process and I was able to slide bridges and streets into it, that's going to improve the overall budget as a whole.
For everybody.
There's no guarantee that that's there at this point.
So for this, this budget, Commissioner Densberger's proposal, do we have consensus on that determined? Consensus in lieu of, I mean, the 300,000, we have to make a decision on within the week, but otherwise, do we have consensus on those?
I'd like to take some time to review.
Want to take some time?
And that's, that's entirely fair.
But that's a good start.
I believe we have a working session scheduled for next week as well.
Would you go with that one more time, Commissioner? You have, you have the seven, please, though.
We'll get it all to you, Commissioner.
Well, I'll, I'll run back through it, Commissioner, but I, I just want to touch on one other thing. I mean, it is entirely possible that, I mean, Mr. Becker and I have been conservative on particularly on some revenue streams. I, I still believe that that is, in all prudence, to get more assertive with it would be a mistake for several reasons. I talked about it, I believe, a couple of weeks ago. We have just several clouds on that horizon. There is a one-cent countywide sales tax proposal that will be on the ballot again in April. If that passes, I fully expect it to have a detrimental effect on our overall sales tax collections. It's got to. It makes things more expensive. The, there is no current state budget. While there may be some, a lot of warm and fuzzy going on in Springfield, we don't know what that budget will entail. It could come back and the state, the figures that we put in for the income tax sharing could go down, it could go up. I would bet on down if they move at all. The personal property replacement tax share could very well get adjusted downward. I think that there are too many variables to, to get real optimistic on the revenue side. I'd far rather underestimate the revenues and perhaps have some money to spend in the third or fourth quarter next year for, thanks for obvious needs. Just too many. I, for one, will not get more optimistic on, on the revenue side. You know, as, as far as the overall budget, as I said, I'm looking at 315 for seven squads, just to run it down for you, Commissioner. 70 for the fueling station, 25 for a Station 4 gen set. That gets you to about 410. There's a suggestion that we hold 20,000 over out of this budget and add it on next year for a F-250 for fire. Two plow trucks is 360. That gets you to about 790, I believe, which leaves about-
Did we leave off the engine? Was that taken out?
If we add that in, you know,
Well, I was talking about-
With what I've just put out, we're at about 790, which leaves you about 300,000 left to be committed, which is the amount of the roundabout.
And that would give us how much for streets?
Right now, if, without a roundabout, it would add 300,000 to the MFT.
Be about 900,000, am I right?
You'd be at about 850. Otherwise, there's adjustments that would have to be made as far as the roundabout expenditures on streets, plow truck, whatever it may be.
So those are the-
But, but that, that's the proposal, and please send me your, send me your thoughts, and Mr. Becker and I will put this together, and we'll have to make some, hopefully, semi-final decisions next week.
Very good.
Commissioner Densberger, you've given us the, the running totals here as we've been on our spreadsheet.
Yeah, I'm just the scorekeeper here.
You're the scorekeeper. You're, you're keeping score. That's fine. Could we have an updated printout of those roughed-in suggestions, positions that we're at and things that we've pushed out that aren't, that say we're not going to do bike trail, whatever? Push that out to the following years and see how that affects what's coming?
Jeff, can you simply add a column to this as to what I've outlined so far tonight? And then we can talk about the, get it out to these gentlemen, and they can email me their thoughts, and we'll discuss it next week.
If you want to take it out and show '22, '23, '23, '24, if you've got those, have those numbers, and we can at least have them in there and can see where we're headed and where we might.
Yeah, I can add as much as you want to. As you've seen with the other spreadsheet from the departments, Public Works alone was three pages, so what I did on their street requests is took the top five just because the dollar amount was so significant. It was past what we had to spend. So I don't, what I don't want to do is add everything that everybody has. We're going to have a spreadsheet that's going to be ginormous.
You know, we, we treat all the departments equal, and we do as far as fairness in that way. All the department's budgets are not the same either, so it's, it's, we all have needs.
You know, the, the part of this conversation that I'm not comfortable with is it appears that it's shaping up like it has in past years, which is where we should say we're spending this much money on streets, and then what else can we do? We're at the reverse of that.
Right. We are where we are right now. Well, in a perfect world, you would have, just like we have allocation for police cars every year, that's good. And it would be nice if we could allocate so much a year for streets and so much set aside for fire for their capital expenditures. That's where we need to be headed. I think we're headed that way. We'll be at a point in the future. We're not there today.
I, I would greatly prefer to say upfront that we're going to reserve 450 upfront for streets. Now, what else are we going to do?
And just a reminder, how much, Commissioner, we're putting into our reserves this year? Is it 300, 400?
300,000.
Okay. All right, that's where we're at.
Do you have a projection of what that will be? Like, I guess where our general fund balance is now, plus the 300,000?
General fund savings after that 300,000, if I remember, should be right about 2 million.
About 2 million. So we've made a pretty good increase over the last year or two, if that be the case.
If you remember, we had the loan from the other street project that we were paying back and caused the MFT salt issue and all that, and that money has been going in. And we also added 250,000 this year from the resolution.
And, yeah, when we, when we passed the sales tax last summer, a portion of that has to be reserved.
Right. So that number combined this year, we moved 495,000 in from the MFT loan and from the reserve amount. So it's almost half a million this year.
Could-
So, Mr. Becker, we'll get the scorecard, I guess, out to everyone, and please email me your, your thoughts and what your priorities and how you would like to parse this out.
I have one, one more request for the cake, the icing on the cake. I'm aware, I think each of us up here probably are aware of certain debts or payments that drop off our schedule here. Not every dime, but I do know we have some large, large ones coming off here in a year or two. 400,000 here, 500 there. If, if there is significant revenues coming to us in the future, such as one of the development loans that happened years and years ago, it's dropping off 450,000 dollars. If you have that on timing, we can say we're going to be static here on our- here on our sales tax and all that, but as debt drops off, that's the wild card that allows us to have more cash in hand to use accordingly. If there's a way to quantify that, to show that at a glance, I think you'll maybe come up with something, maybe nothing, but if you could do that. Okay.
I don't believe we have any coming off in the next year.
I was going to say, that's a debt schedule.
Yeah, it's a debt schedule, which I can.
It really doesn't matter for this year.
No.
It's like, three to four years out, there's a couple of them coming out that are loans with MCB.
So in like 2025, it'll drop like a million or so.
Right.
2024, maybe.
And then 2028 before early.
Which is a big drop, yes.
But there's some. I mean, that's. Okey-dokey. I want to give the public a chance to comment. If anybody wants to come forward, make a comment, please come forward.
Public comments?
Seeing no one come forward, go once, go on twice. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Commissioner Call, second.
Second.
Commissioner Densberger, roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Densberger.
Aye.
Jeffers.
Aye.
Call.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Biden, Your Honor.